To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, we are nation, on your honor, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence as we consider our Metta Way of the United States Services. Superintendent, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Andronico.
Present.
Mr. Bogoli.
Absent.
Mr. Diametius.
Present.
Mr. Guttrow.
Present.
Mrs. Hubley.
Present.
Mrs. Lebo.
Present.
And Mayor Coke. And high school representatives, Timothy and Amy, it's here. The mayor said he would be just a little bit.
At this time, I'd like to take a motion for the approval of the minutes of the regular school committee for September 6th, motion by Mr. Diametius, second by Mrs. Hubley, all those in favor.
Aye.
I'd also like to take a motion for the organizational meeting.
Seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. At this time, I would invite people to come up for open forum. Open forum is an opportunity for community input regarding Quincy public schools. After giving his or her name and address, each speaker may make a presentation of no more than four minutes to the school committee. An individual may not exchange their time or yield to others. Anybody for open forum at this time.
Scott Alessandro, Seventy Upward Street. On behalf of Courtney Pertios and I and the rest of citywide PTO, I want to say congratulations to Ms. Lebo for being reelected and for Mr. Andronico and Mr. Guttrow on being elected to the school committee. During the citywide sponsored school committee debate in October, it was great to hear the issues and ideas important to you and that you would focus on during your school committee tenure. Mr. Andronico, we look forward to working with you on increasing access to gaining college credit through the high school dual enrollment classes and better school parent communication through a revamped QPS website. Mr. Guttrow, we look forward to working with you as you seek to establish a rainy day fund for QPS, explore other innovative ways to look at the budget, and broaden diversity and inclusiveness through teacher recruitment. Ms. Lebo, we are glad for your continued leadership exemplified by being selected as vice chair and look forward to working with you to continue to increase access for students with disabilities and assessing students' QPS and educational experiences based upon their post-high school experiences. And we, of course, look forward to continuing the work with Mr. Diametius, Mr. Bogoli, Ms. Hubley, Mayor Coke, and Dr. De Cristofaro on all the issues important to them, as those are the same issues important to the parents and children of QPS. We especially look forward to working with all the members of the school committee on the process of and decisions related to the opening of a new elementary school and what it will mean for enrollment and redistricting in the QPS elementary and middle schools. As always, we are thankful to you for serving on the school committee and look forward to another year of supporting QPS's mission to provide a safe and nurturing learning environment for students to achieve their individual maximum potential, a potential that is reached when students feel valued for their uniqueness and their diverse experiences and backgrounds and are celebrated and honored inside and outside of the classroom. Achieving that for each individual student is difficult, but we believe we have a leadership at the school committee, at QPS, and in the city to do this. Thank you.
Anyone else for open forum? Open forum, seeing that, I'm going to close that out of the agenda. Superintendent, could we have your report, please?
Very good, thank you very much. I'd like to start with Inspire.
I like quick kids because we do all the stations, we do all exercise, because of it, our blood starts flowing in our body. It's good for our health. Every exercise has an importance, so I think it's very, very, very good.
And you can run up the stairs and down the stairs, and it really gets your heart muscle pumping, and it gets your blood flowing. And when you exercise, like when you run and jog, it also gives you muscles, so you get stronger.
You should really just check your cereal, make sure that it's healthy, because even if it's marketed to be healthy, it might not be the best choice.
Probably stuff that contains less sugar, obviously. So look at the nutrition facts, definitely corn flakes is definitely a better option. Cashew, you might think it's a good option, because it has a lot of fiber, isn't that what, yeah, protein, but it still does have a ton of sugar in it. Special K, just stuff that doesn't, you know doesn't have like artificial things, because artificial does come with sugar.
We did yo-yo yogurt, how much sugar is too much? We decided to do yogurt because people think of it as a healthy alternative, but sometimes it is still really high in sugar. This is why it's important to look at the nutrition facts.
Like you see some of your best friends, and they're a little bit off, and they're not treating you the same way you normally like to be treated from them.
You may see people smiling every day, but you don't know what's deep inside of them, because they might be sad or depressed, they might struggle. It's like a very empowered thing to see, or it would help if you were struggling through something, it'd give you a whole new perspective on things.
The most important thing I took away from it is that you never really know what people are going through, or what they're hiding, so you just have to be kind to everyone, because you don't know how it could change their day or even their life.
I thought the presentation was important, because we don't normally, usually people who come to North are talking about like drug abuse and opioids and stuff like that, but for someone to come here and talk about anxiety and depression and suicide, it's very important for students to hear. And I thought the message here in the cops was really strong, because a lot of people related to it.
If somebody wanted to come see this presentation, I would say that even if for a person that isn't struggling in any issues, any aspects of life, isn't feeling any emotionally impaired, that you should definitely listen to the word that he's speaking, because he's been through a lot of situations. He's been through wisdom, he's been through pain, and I think that he's using that to help other people. So if you want to see a different way of life, if you want to see a different aspect, I think that you should really see or view the presentation.
The Kindness Rocks Project spread inspiration and motivation to unsuspecting people to random inspirational rocks placed around the city.
Now, more than ever, kindness can become a connecting force for good during uncertain times. We will be creating kindness rocks gardens in several places in our neighborhood. We believe that strength can be found in random acts of kindness. It was fun creating our own designs of kindness, so we can show kindness through our neighborhood.
I love the rocks that you did. The messages that were on these rocks are so beautiful, the pictures, the sentences, the words, they were awesome. I cannot wait for us to plant our kindness garden. I'm so happy. What do I do when I'm happy?
Thank you.
Good evening to everybody, it's nice to see you all. And I have the pleasure of speaking to you tonight about our Substance Use Prevention Week at both high schools, at North Quincy High School and Quincy High School. For the past seven years, during the first week of January, Mayor Coke has sponsored the Substance Use Prevention Week. And each year it seems to get bigger and better. This year, because of the snowstorm in the middle of the week, where we will be rescheduling a few of the presentations and activities, this will give us the opportunity to spread these presentations throughout the remainder of the school year. Keeping the conversation going and finding opportunities to support our students in making those healthy decisions is a commitment that we want to make. Still to come, our Substance Use Prevention Health Year, Dynamic Influence for Grades Nine and Ten, One-to-One Mentoring Programs, Professional Development on Baking, Substance Use Prevention Interventions for counselors, psychologists, deans, and health educators, Small Group Interventions for Students at the High Schools, Science-Based Substance Use Prevention Curriculum, and the list keeps growing. Within the Inspire video, you just saw Michael Fowler presenting "You Don't Know Me Until You Really Know Me." This presentation started our week with a powerful message of loving yourself and others. And yesterday, I participated in professional development for Rebecca Fridler. She's a clinician with an expertise in substance use prevention, and she wanted all of us in the professional development to remember a very important message that cannot be overstated. People, in our case teens, need to know that they matter. They need to know that they matter enough to themselves and to the important adults in their lives, as well as to each other. Teens who believe that they matter make better and healthier choices. From this perspective, we can help. It is our job to make sure that teens know they matter to us, and how have we done this? Mayor Coke and the Thompson family funded all of the programs that we had that first week in January and the programs to come. This funding comes from the heart. The school committee and the superintendent have been staunch supporters of all the efforts of our support staff and our site staff. The issue of substance use prevention is a high priority, and that's because our kids matter. The outstanding high school nurses, health interventionists, counselors, principals, and deans work to make sure our kids know that they matter. Our students supporting one another and leading the school-wide initiatives show that they matter to each other. It is truly an inspirational week, and I want to thank you all for supporting and funding the Substance Use Prevention Week and beyond. So, thank you.
And I'd like to introduce Paul Heinz, Commissioner of Public Buildings, and as you know, the storm of January fourth caused significant damage in our city and also in Quincy Public Schools, and especially at Broad Meadows Middle School. So I'd like to introduce you and the overview of everything that happened at Broad Meadows.
Thank you, Dr. De Cristofaro. Good evening, committee. Yes, as Dr. De Cristofaro mentioned, my name is Paul Heinz, and I'm Commissioner of the Department of Public Buildings. And January fourth was somewhat of a disaster today for us. I was first summoned to the senior center, and I threw my hands to God, I said, "What? What are we going to do?" Suddenly I got the phone call to go to Broad Meadows, and then suddenly the senior center didn't look so bad. We had the benefit of the senior center of not having lost the power, so we had a little easier recovery effort at that facility. But thanks to the efforts of a number of people, a number of departments of the city, public department buildings included, as well as Indian Seven for the fire department who brought us water when we needed it, we were able to recover. The damage itself was caused by the astronomically high tide while the storms were, got to about fifteen foot elevation, which is higher than the Los Angeles seventy-eight. The tide went up against the Broad Meadows building, compressed the land around it, the water rushed in and the building, the building's up on pilings. Once that happened, no amount of infrastructure, pumps, could have stopped the inundation of water that we experienced. So you likely have heard, but the natural grid transform involved is beneath that building. The boiler room was constructed below sea level, as is the front of the auditorium. And when the waters rushed in under the building, it went through crawl spaces, it went through pipe holes, it went everywhere, and it literally was a tsunami coming into those rooms. So the natural grid vault was nine feet of water. The primary lines to the telephone pole, the electric lines went underwater. I can't imagine the explosion when that hit the water. Thankfully, it was in a concrete vault designed to take such an event. The boiler room had six feet of water, so the entire power plant, excuse me, entire heating plant, both the steam plant and the hot water plant, and the domestic hot water plant, and all of the pipes associated with it, and all the pumps, and all the electronics were underwater. The ventilation shafts into the auditorium backed up the ocean water as well, so we had two feet of water in the auditorium. We actually had fish swimming in there. So we immediately went to work. Tony Maldiero from the Public Buildings Department had suggested that in the past, when they lost heating plant at Sterling Middle School, there was a firm by Rokas and Mobile Boilers. We called them instantly, stayed literally standing in the water while we called them, and dispatched them. We got a hold of emergency management. They, Fred Campbell and Richie Bryan and Rich, they brought in the emergency generators because the building lost the power. So when Mobile Boilers were finally on site, we were able to have them piped into the building's heating systems, and then brought in the second mobile boiler to fire up the steam heating system, because the building has two systems. And so with the help of the Department of Public Works, we came up with their, you know, their huge pumps, we were able to pump out the wall, pump out the boiler, and pump out the auditorium. That evening, we called in a professional restoration company that took care of the auditorium, they steam cleaned it, they disinfected it, they vacuumed all the water out of the sand. We had them back, it was still a trace odor, so we ripped the front of the stage off, had them come back. Yesterday, they did underneath, actually the day before, they did underneath the stage, the smell is gone. It actually smells better than before the storm. The Mobile Boilers carried the building for two weeks until this week ago today, when the building went back on its own heating plant. That was no easy effort. Coincidentally, luckily, there were two hot water boilers that we need, there were two of them on the summer line being manufactured. Were able to jump ahead of somebody who had ordered them for a planned event. They were kind enough to concede to us, so we got them right off the summer line as they were finished. And another mechanical contractor rebuilt the burners and electronics for the steam plant. So we're able to recover from that. And because of which, I'm very proud to say we only lost one day of school in that building, when by rights it should have been weeks, if not even possibly months. Part of that effort, part of what would have been a collateral and catastrophic damage would be if the pipes for both the domestic system and the heating systems froze and burst. Would be repiping both systems for that entire building, that's a fairly expansive sprawling building with a lot of mechanicals in it. You know, through the efforts, again, of the folks in my department, the Fred Campbell and those, the electricians from San Antonio Electric, everybody came together, really showed their brightest game for the efforts in the city of Quincy, and pulled it together. At one point, we got to the point where we're actually turning on the ovens and the stoves just to get some heat in the buildings and to keep it. The building got down to above thirty-four, thirty-five degrees, so it was just the line of real catastrophe, when we were able to get the hot water boilers on. And I will say that that was the weekend, and I think most of you know that it was the, you know, one of the coldest stretches in a hundred years in the Boston area. So the staff from, the crew from Rokas and Boiler, and our own people, Brent and Brian Dunn and others, had to go outside about three o'clock in the morning and transfer the temporary electricity off of the emergency management generators and go onto a backup stand that we ordered to have at the ready should we need it. So it was about minus five degrees, they were lying in the snow, and below, I think it was about twenty-five degree initial temperature, and they were out there for hours doing that. And they really should be commended for that. I don't know that I would have done it myself, and they did, without being asked. So a number of crew spent literally forty hours straight there, you know, sleeping in the classroom floor or whatever, just to be at the ready when they were needed. And it was just a great effort by everybody, whether it be in my office or my maintenance crew, the tradesmen, the outside contractors, that we were able to do what I didn't think we were going to be able to do. The building status today, which probably, other than the fracking I just did, is probably what more interests you. The building is a hundred percent on its own heating plants, both the hot water and the steam plants. Both domestic hot water heaters have been replaced with permanent replacements. The auditorium has been sanitized and cleaned and painted, there's no residual damage in that regard. The mass electric transformers have been replaced, and the emergency generator of the building is back up and running when needed. Unlike the senior center, we were unable to lift the boilers at Broad Meadows at this point in time. Broad Meadows Plant has welded steel piping, which we would not have been able to cut out, re-root and weld, and get the boilers in in a timely way to have those boilers up above the flood level. It's certainly our hope and our goal to go back and redo the room, you know, with sixteen machines and chemicals again, this is a hot water vent, and raise them up above that flood level. And then working with the MSBA, hopefully, I know we're currently having an emergency statement of interest in with them, hopefully get some funding to recover from this disaster. But I think it also gives us priority going forward on the accelerated repair program project to replace that entire boiler room, and it needs desperately, this has its materials and the other things that hold boiler room you would expect to have. We'd like to clean that out, bring it above flood level, and avoid this from ever happening again.
Well, I mean, I think, you know, we all thank you for your leadership and the knowledge that you bring to take us into this situation. And I do want to, again, thank your staff, people, of course, and your staff and DPW, Engrit, our custodians, everyone that kind of pitched in to make sure that our students and our staff came back to school left, you know, one day as opposed to many others. So I think for us, for Mr. Gilbert, Miss Boochi, and our students, our parents, and staff, we want to thank you very, very much for doing an incredible job in getting us back to where it should be for our kids. We thank you very much.
Mr. Guttrow?
Thank you. Paul Exel Jones, getting everybody back quickly, just a quick question about, one, was it just certain rooms that were flooded, or?
The natural grid vault, which is under the building, and we don't even have keys, we're not allowed, and that flooded out in the adjacent room below the school, but wouldn't impact the operations of the school, just the power plant, then the boiler room, and then the only other room again, was the auditorium.
The only reason I ask is mold, is there like a long-term monitoring program? I mean, I know they go through the cleanup, mold's worst day.
The plant, the boiler plant, the boiler room and the vault are concrete block, painted concrete block, they've been cleaned and dried, and there's no issue there, there's no organics for the mold to feed on as it grows. The auditorium is a concrete painted floor, steel stanchions on the chairs, and concrete block walls that are covered with a mesh that has a concrete veneer on it. So again, there's no organics there for it to take hold in. The front of the stage did have vertical wooden slats, but that's what we ripped out yesterday to access them behind, and that's in the dumpster and gone forever. But again, that's why we're so quick to bring in the pumps, air out the building, and get the professional cleaners in. I did communicate with Commissioner Shalee from the Health Department and explain to him the situation, the steps that we took to remediate, and the conditions we experienced today, and he said, I believe he put in writing, I know he put in writing to me, and gave that to Superintendent, where he expressed no concern for the safety of the staff, the students, or faculty of the building.
Great, yeah, I mean, I know that, from my professional experience, dealing in some of the hurricane ravaged areas, whether it's in Texas, or out in Florida, or Puerto Rico, you know, one of the issues, of course, you have flooded out properties, it's a subsequent mold that you have to deal with, whether it's in residential properties, commercial properties, just, it's just staying vigilante on it. It's not, sometimes it's not just the first cleanup, but it's just making sure.
I think it's important to point out two things. You know, the situation we experience now in cold January may not be the same experience of the seventh of July, and mostly climates that you just pointed out on the hot, humid southern areas. We had the, I guess, the fortune, now we got to have the building very, very cold. But this, you have to remember too, was clean ocean water, this was the first line that the water hit. This is an urban runoff that's come downstream from a river. You know, this is simply, the waters of Quincy Bay, Tamar River Bay, flow, flow, and the banks. So we didn't have the dealings of rush, upstream, watching off of the streets and gaffney tanks and all of that. We didn't experience any of that.
Thank you, Mr. Heinz. I just wanted to let folks know that we also have on our pad the letter from Commissioner Healy stating the inspection that he did and checking the mold, and I agree with that quality, it would be nice to have it done on a regular basis. Obviously, we haven't been doing it, if you found something that's possible. I also want to give a shout out, not only to all of the city departments that were involved in this, but I believe that last night at the Broad Meadows PTO meeting, I believe it was last night, the parents even said one of the neighbors called Mr. Gilbert to tell him what was going on at the school the day of the incident, which is very cool. So not only do we have that rapper on service of the people who love the schools and take care of them, and then, of course, the city departments that were able to really rally the troops and save that building. So I want to thank you all.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul.
Also, within the city, the storm and the snow presented a lot of issues as well at the site level, and I want to make sure we thank Park Department and DPW for the work they did around our schools to get our schools ready, so again, we didn't miss any more days of school. The other issue that I wanted to talk to you about was the issue of transportation that we had, I know we sent a message out to you about our issue, but to update you on it and to update the public as well. So in regard to our transportation fleet, our twelve large yellow buses were always in service, and then no service was ever interrupted to about five hundred of our kindergarten through grade five students. Our focus really was over four hundred of our pre-kindergarten children, because the morning after the storm, we found that we had about fifteen of our mini buses not able to start. So that put us into, obviously, a situation where we needed to take a look at two things. The first certainly was plan for mechanical assistance in order to get our mini buses up and running as soon as we possibly could. The second, and simultaneously, was to work with our drivers, with our transportation staff, with SLT members to reroute and or modify our services to pre-kindergarten children, with a focus on our youngest special education children that require special seating on our integrated mini buses. So certainly, we appreciate the mayor's direction and his assistance in having our DPW, the DPW mechanics, the Quincy Fire Department mechanics, as well as the use of elder service vehicles. They were excellent, they were supportive, as well as the mayor, but also Chief Barron, Chief Keenan, and Tom Plasby from Senior Services. So as we began to get our mini bus, so as we began to get our mini buses back in service, we worked, you know, well over the weekend, on Saturday and Sunday, in order to revise every route that we had had in place, with the goal of transporting as many of our children as possible. So during the week of January eighth, we continually made progress in bringing mini buses back into service, as well as looking at, making sure that we updated parents on a regular basis with personal phone calls, not necessarily just the robo-call type of thing, but our team administrators make calls to every parent along the way, letting you know of updates. So they were, you know, obviously, parents were very supportive in driving their three and four-year-olds to schools, so school was in session, certainly for our CARES students initially. And then children at Delicace as well, parents driving in, as they dropped off, we had Quincy Police that were there. Again, just this partnership, they were there for drop-off because of the snow, because of ice, just making sure that it was the safest possible to drop off our children. And of course, our staff, our professional staff, our paraprofessional staff out there, making sure that they have safe rock, these little guys and girls will walk into the building. Our SLT members worked tirelessly to create the most safe, the most timely, and most effective drop-off and pickup for our kids, and I applaud their efforts as well. Certainly, our bus drivers, every one of them have been incredibly supportive, incredibly flexible, and professional, you know, as their routes changed, as we got vehicles back, and we had to meet, regroup. back and we had to meet, regroup, uh, and let the, the drivers know. So those drivers, very early in the morning, got to know what their routes were and, uh, the transportation staff actually called, uh, the bus drivers personally, let them know what their routes were and met at six o'clock in the morning to, to share those routes, to talk about any issues, uh, that we may have had. Uh, so the process, you know, certainly will affect our budget, um, and we're working on that and, uh, we have a January thirty-first, uh, meeting for quarterly budget. Um, Ms. Hubley, uh, chairing, and we'll be able to share details of its effect, of the situation's effect on our budget, um, at, at that time. So, yeah, I thank you for that.
Mr. Gendtrow?
I'll defer to Ms. Hubley first, then I'll, uh...
Oh, my goodness. Do you know why at this point that so many of our buses were not working and didn't have, recall relatively, not, not that old, these are relatively new buses, so it's curious, why so many of them at one time?
Sorry. I think it's a combination of the tide surge and, um, and its effect on buses. You know, some were wiring issues from the water, I mean, some were, um, gas pump issues, transmission issues, but as we looked at it, it was mostly the wiring that was wet, very, very wet, that the, the universe could not stop.
Thank you. Mr. Gendtrow?
Thank you. Uh, so they, they were flooded. That's, that's the beginning, I was like fifteen. So it wasn't the age or the quality of the battery, it was really more, where, where are they parked? Are they down by the causeway?
Yes.
Uh, and so fifteen of them basically, it shorted, right? And that's what happened, so. And, and there's a financial impact to that. Um, you know, I mean, as we're, we're talking about this, we're thinking about, you know, these hundred-year storms can happen every year and resiliency around some of the places that we keep our school assets as well as our school buildings and, and you're, you know, you're not gonna stop them on a nature, but you could do resiliency planning and maybe in a future meeting, I'd love to learn about, you know, where the schools are in flood zones, what, what assets are susceptible to some of that and how to go with some of that. So fifteen buses, are those buses back and operating?
Yeah, I didn't say that, so thanks for asking that, that question. We, we're transporting all of our, all of our children.
So there, there were fifteen impacted?
Fifteen were impacted and right now there, there may be four or five that aren't back, but the routes were re, you know, revisited all the routes, so we're doing it with less buses.
I get you. So that's not the full universe, that's just a partial number of the buses that were impacted, is it?
Right.
And so how many students for how long were, and parents were kind of at this place?
Uh, it's difficult to ask. One full day, uh, and then after that was the Tuesday, it was, um, the pre-kindergarten at Delacasea, um, and Snick Harbor.
I believe it was like a hundred kids?
I couldn't, no, it was more than that. Forty were, were the kids.
Oh, no, I meant, I meant in the fifteen buses.
Yeah, it's real, no worries. You know, I mean... Yeah, no, there, there could have been two hundred, two students, you know.
And, and...
Both pre-kindergarten, there are full days, there are half days, you know, so it's, it varies.
I get you.
Yeah.
To a variety of different locations.
Right, and then the parents helped out with the parent drop-off.
Yeah.
Um, while we were kind of getting back. And I think that, uh, the key was to just keep revisiting the routes, you know, and improving how many students, so.
I get you.
Yeah, so that, I mean, we just kept at it.
So four, four buses, is that what you said, four are out?
I think there are probably four or five buses that, um, are still out, that are at the bus yard and our mechanic is beginning to work on those.
But Plan B is...
Well, Plan B is to obviously get them all up, up and running.
No, but I mean, are, are any parents compensated? You know, there's only one day that parents were at a...
One or two days that they had, they did that, correct?
I'm looking forward to understand, I mean, you wanna protect the investments.
Absolutely.
And, and, yeah, it's worth thinking about, so. Thank you.
Mayor Koch?
Yeah, I just wanna pipe in on, on the issue because it was a crazy weekend. The communication was just tremendous between all of the department heads and folks. And I, I don't wanna, um, reiterate much what was said, but I can't say enough about the on-ground decisions Paul Hines made during the event, not waiting for analysis, making decisions, uh, and getting things done there by saving two buildings, which would have been, uh, really far more costly to the city. Uh, having said that, um, you know, we, we were, saw you here a few times over the weekend, I saw you and your team working it constantly and public works constantly, but I know in communicating, for example, once we went into the bus situation, we went right at it on snow removal around those schools where we knew we were gonna have more drop-offs and we needed to get the windrows out and, and the sidewalks clear, uh, clearer than usual. So Delacasea was one of the efforts, I know that weekend, we did a snow removal across the city, you know, which also adds to the expense. Uh, but I, I, you know, I'm just so proud of the public employees, they really take a hit regularly from the public. Um, but this was really a great example when we, when we worked together, uh, you know, how we get it done really for the taxpayer and for the residents of the city. So I just wanna thank Superintendent His team, Paul His team, Fire, Police, DPW, Inspection Services, those guys who came in over the weekend because we needed to get inspections for National Grid to rehook up. There's just so many aspects of this storm, uh, because it was felt more than a snowstorm as, as we know, so I wanna thank everybody. We certainly, uh, I've had conversations with the superintendent, we, we, we've got some long-term, uh, plans that we're looking at in relation to the bus yard, get that location, the permanent location. Uh, but we also have heads of discussions and I know it's become more a personnel issue to see what exactly happened here because normally these wouldn't have been moved in a storm event like that. So I know the superintendent is doing his own internal investigation on that with personnel and rather leave it at that, but we're, um, you know, it should be set, it should have been moved, there's no question about that. But, um, other than that, I think it was a pretty intense effort and, uh, everybody worked their tails off and certainly is, is the mayor grateful for that. It wasn't a, the other department, the other department, it was anybody, what can we do to help? It was really tremendous. So, uh, out of a bad situation, uh, we saw some great, uh, some good. So, so thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent?
Chief, did you want to... Mr. Gendtrow, just... So, um, if I may, I just, I had a follow-up question, um, in respect to what the mayor stated. Um, so in an event of a storm preparation, would the buses be moved? So in the past, with the storm two years ago, for instance, where we expected a large amount of snow, would the buses have been moved?
Um, we, we moved the, the buses, um, once or twice in that, that great winter of fifteen. We haven't done it after that.
Okay.
But, uh, you know, as, as the mayor said, that, it's really, it's a personnel matter that we're, we're working at right now and, and in hindsight, you know, obviously, they, they should have been moved to higher ground right within the bus yard.
I guess what I'm more so asking is, is there a procedure in place or laws in place? There is, okay.
Yeah, I get you. But again, it's, Mr. Gendtrow, so you can look into a lot of different things.
Sure, sometime. No, thank you. Thanks.
Superintendent?
You know, the, the superintendent's report, everybody.
Sorry.
You know, no, 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 it's, it's, we, we spoke for the orientation, we, uh, talked with, uh, Mr. Andronico and Mr. Gendtrow for quite a long time and, um, very informative and, and I think both of them, we welcome them, obviously, but also they know, I think too, that call anytime, anyplace, anywhere, uh, that's, that's why we're here. So I thought it was a great session, so thank you, uh, both gentlemen for, uh, that orientation. Um, just a, a couple of, um, updates on the partnership with our Matter of Heart Initiative, Rita Bailey, um, nursing coordinator and, and Mara. We know that February is, is Heart Month and we celebrate that in our classrooms and our gymnasiums, our nurses, health educators, physical educators, the BOX program, all celebrate, um, Heart Month and a lot of different activities. You know, and the other major activity for our partnership is the fourth year, uh, of our Matter of Heart Initiative we call it Brewster Ambulance. Um, they come in and every middle school and, and schedule a time in every middle school, grade eight, uh, students have the, uh, availability for a family and friends CPR program. Um, so that's probably about, you know, about seven hundred of our grade eight students have done it. Again, this is our fourth year, every middle school, um, gets to participate in that. That's that week, uh, up until the ninth, February ninth. And then February tenth, at Central Middle School, at eight-thirty, uh, AM to noon, Brewster will offer a free full day, a free full, full day, free full CPR certification course for all of our grade eight students in their parents. Uh, so, uh, and, uh, healthy snacks and water will be available from Star Market and Shaw's and, you know, we've had over a hundred the last three years, over a hundred students and parents, a pretty, a pretty, uh, nice event. So I wanna thank our partners for, for that. Our Splash Program services our grade two students across the system that, um, don't have the ability at, at that age to, to swim. And so again, with our partnership with the YMCA, um, and, uh, Transportation, our Food Services, we, we really take care of these students. Um, and that's on Tuesday afternoons on a six-week session in usually two schools at one time. So, um, that's been, that's been a tremendous, a tremendous success. So, you know, and as we move forward with our, with our events, you know, we look forward to Read Across America, we've got this Birthday Initiative, that's, uh, February twenty-sixth through, uh, March second. March eighth, our fifth-grade Student Council Leadership Summit, uh, and then again, two other activities in March, in your Credit for Life there, uh, as well as our partnership efforts. So we continue to do some really great things. Our partners are extraordinary, um, we have leadership from Keith, leadership from Jan Siller, um, we appreciate everything that they do. Uh, at, at your places, you have student recognition in regard to our student athletes, our, um, very talented band and, and choral students, uh, as well as winners of the Quincy Lions Club Speech Contest that we enter, uh, every year. Uh, and then also at your, at your places, we, we have your calendar for the Young Writers Atlantic, and every year they, uh, they're just winners, that's all, they work hard and they're winners. And Mary Ann Phillips is the coordinator there, the advisor, mentor, and Young Writers Literacy Magazine, Literary Magazine. Uh, so this year again, for two thousand seventeen, the American Elastic Press Association's first place, uh, Most Outstanding Intermediate School Literary Art Magazine goes to the Atlantic Journal of Writers. So they continue to absolutely impress. Our BOX program, this is the fourth year, uh, third year of our BOX program, it's a four-year grant, uh, from, uh, the Reblock Foundation. Uh, again, sixteen schools participate, just about ten thousand of our students are participating in the BOX program. Uh, continues obviously, obviously to be in memory of Emily Zourenok, our former, uh, Central Middle School teacher, and remains a tribute to, to Emily and to her love of children and athletics and of course, uh, education. We had a topping off ceremony, seems like such a long time ago, it was December fourteenth, um, on the grounds of our new middle school and, um, and at that, in that meeting, at that event, we had, we had our Junior Building Committee members kick it off with Ms. Mia Heim, welcoming, uh, everyone, uh, as well as a history of the topping off to share. And that was another, Athena Perry, another Junior Building Committee, uh, member, greetings of the city by Mayor Koch, and then Executive Director of Massachusetts School Building Authority, Jack McCarthy spoke to everyone, you know, that was their building committee chair, Jim Timmons, our city solicitor, also spoke, um, at, at the event, Principal Francisini, Assistant Principal Courtney Mitchell was there as well, representatives from Bond, our, our builders, PCA three sixty, our OPM, and our architect, Scott, uh, was there as well, Scott Dunlap. And Quincy City Council, the councilors couldn't make it that day, but both Brad Crowell from Ward Two, Brian Palmucci at Ward Four have been tremendously supportive of everything that we have done, so we appreciate what, what they do. I know that, um, that day that Kathy Hubley was there and, and Emily was there and, and Paul Boulud was there as well. Uh, it was a little cool, chilly, but the sun, the sun felt, felt, okay? Uh, and our building committee members that were there, we appreciate their support. Paul Hines was there, again, Walter McDonald from Public Buildings, Kristen Perry, his parents, and Ruth Whitmer, Principal Michael Hancock, uh, and again, our Junior Building Committee and all its, uh, all the, the members with their hard hats were there. So the involvement of students is critical in this, uh, this whole process, so appreciate that. County Academies, January third, um, Mara and Students' Food Services offered vaping, um, educating parents about vaping. Uh, that was at Central, again, on January third. January eighth, Curriculum Assessment Team presented with Courtney and Scott and Dunlap at Citywide, appreciate the work that they did in, in a presentation about preparing for, uh, the NCAS. Wanted to, to make sure you knew of a principal appointment and assistant principal appointment at Snick Harbor. Uh, both of these people were in acting positions and, uh, very proud to, to appoint Principal Michael Marani. Mike, many of you know, graduated Bryant College, Master of Education from Pittsburgh, State in Curriculum and Teaching. He taught for a few years at Point, grade eight, math, um, and then became Assistant Principal at Snick Harbor beginning in two thousand thirteen. Also directed and coordinated our extended day program for the system. Uh, and he's made presentations to subcommittee as well as the, the full committee. Uh, his licenses, again, in math and principal and assistant principal, so welcome, Mr. Marani, I'm sure he'll be in front of you at some time, either in subcommittee or the full committee. Also, as Assistant Principal, Ms. Diane Batcock, Diane's graduate of Birmingham State, she's a Master in Education from Wheelock College, uh, she's been a teacher of language development class at Athan and Howe, and I think you'll remember her for presentations to subcommittee with her energy and excitement and enthusiasm that is unbelievable that she brings to that school and also service to so many of our staff and parents. Her licenses are in elementary, moderate disabilities, uh, special education administrator as well as principal and assistant director. So, um, we'll, we'll bring them to you, just to introduce them, uh, to you and, uh, we're very, very proud of having them on board. Um, and then the last thing, and I know you, this is when you think, you'll think, gosh, but, um, was just to say the homeschool connections that are in your, uh, at your places with Kirkland, there's those, Rod Meadows, Point Webster, as well as the middle school, remember that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'd like to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is all business. And, uh, the first item, item A, is this new committee meeting calendar, which was presented at the policy subcommittee meeting and is now going to be sitting on this committee for a week. Uh, I'm sorry, until our next meeting. Any discussion on the calendar? Seeing none, we'll move on to item B, that will stay on the, on the agenda. Item B is the two thousand eighteen-nineteen school year calendar, which also was presented at the policy, uh, policy subcommittee meeting. Any discussion on that calendar? Seeing none, that will also stay here and we'll vote for next school committee to approve the calendar. Um, item five, new business, uh, the assessment calendar, esteemed Dr. Halikus Perkins and Ms. Roy will be presenting.
As most of you know, our, our assessment calendar is, uh, one that we rely on heavily to try to make sure everyone knows exactly what we're doing and when we're doing it and why we're doing it, what difference it does make. And so I think there's a lot of communication on it and, uh, at this point, I'd love to turn it over to Madam.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the curriculum assessment management team, we thank you for your time tonight. Erin, Beth, and I are here to share an overview of the Quincy Public Schools... Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. Um, Erin, Beth, and I are here to share an overview of the Quincy Public Schools Assessment Calendar. We use this, uh, schedule to inform all the stakeholders of, of our wide variety of comprehensive and periodic assessment tools designed for students and used to monitor the progress of academic achievement. The variety of assessments reflects a wide range of academic tools used to measure individuals' course and grade level progress. Unlike the state-run MCAS, which publishes school district results and provides parent guardian reports, many of our district assessments are used... are used to screening tools or progress monitoring. While we don't publish individual student results, any assessment results are available to parents and guardians and can be reviewed with a teacher, a principal, or chairperson at any time throughout the year. Students take periodic assessments several times throughout the year to give teachers more information about what students have learned. Teachers use these assessments along with daily classwork and routine observations to learn where students are excelling and where they need more support. Our assessment calendar includes state mandated testing such as MCAS and ACCESS. However, districts can choose a combination of local assessments that best meet the needs of their students. Teachers and specialists can also supplement with their own formative and summative assessments. To give you a better idea, we'll share, a better idea, we'll share some examples of a cross-section of state and local assessments administered here in the Quincy Public Schools. The purpose of the assessment calendar is for planning, scheduling, staff training, and student preparation, but also to communicate the variety of test types, the content areas, the skill focus, and the grade levels that we're administering these assessments to. The creation of the annual assessment calendar starts at the end of the previous year when a review of current assessments takes place. Content is added over the summer as the curriculum, assessment, and special education teams work within the new budget lines for purchase of existing testing licenses or administration kits. We also keep close tabs on the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to confirm all testing schedules and when testing companies release their software updates and publish their own testing windows for the tools that we purchased. In September, the assessment calendar is published and shared with the SLT and principals, who will then share the calendar with their staff. The calendar is adjusted throughout the year, but really only when there is a critical change to a testing window as they announce through the Department of Education or when we are implementing a field test or a pilot assessment. We communicate, test administrations with staff and parents through multiple modes of communication, such as publication on the QPS website, staff meetings, principals weekly, publishing upcoming testing windows on school websites, in-school curriculum newsletters, and visually on the revolving screens, on the TV screen in the buildings. Assessment results can be shared at parent-teacher conferences and team meetings, again, at any time at a parent's request.
Good evening. In your packet, you have a copy of our QPS Assessment Calendar. This calendar can also be found on the QPS website under the QPS Info tab within the District Improvement Plan Overview. As we go through our presentation, if there is an assessment we didn't mention, please feel free to ask for clarification about any of these tests or the testing windows. So, for our fall administration in the elementary world, when the children return to school and are beginning to settle in in September and October, we begin our fall testing. One assessment that we've been giving for many years is the DIBELS assessment. This test takes a total of three minutes to give per student and is given to all children in grades K to 2. This assessment is a quick and easy assessment that is a great predictor of the risk of reading struggles. The Developmental Reading Inventory, or DRA, is given to students in grades K to 2. And in addition to assessing students in the areas of accuracy and fluency, it also assesses comprehension. This assessment is extremely helpful in identifying independent and instructional reading levels of our students. The MPG, or the MAP for Primary Grades, is given to students in grade two. It is an adaptable assessment that assesses students in the areas of reading and math. This assessment also identifies growth targets for each individual student from fall to winter and then again, from winter to spring. The math assessment is given to students in grades three to five. The math and the MPG are very similar and are both, both give you or the teacher a score known as a RIT score for each student as well as growth targets. The biggest difference between the math and the MPG is that the MPG includes audio support for all students and is geared more towards foundational skills, those building blocks in literacy and mathematics. Audio support is available on the MAP as an accommodation for those children who may need it in the higher grade levels. All of the data gathered from the assessments that I just mentioned are reviewed during our ILT meetings or our Integrated Learning Team meetings. During these meetings, teachers meet together with the literacy, special education, and EL staff, as well as the principal and guidance counselor, to review data and discuss what supports and services are necessary, both inside and outside the classroom, to meet each student's needs. So, now I just want to share with you some actual examples of some of the assessments that we give in the fall. So, this is an example from the math, from the K to 2, the MPG. So, this is obviously a math example. It's, the MPG is, assesses both the areas of reading and math. And you could, you can. So, you can see in this one, the, the little icon on the side, that's where the audio component is in this example. Next, this is the DIBELS Oral Reading Fluency. So, this is an actual example of a passage that we use. It's given to students in the fall of second grade. So, you can see a pretty challenging text. And the, the teachers follow along with the student and record their errors. So, this is actually an example of a DRA assessment. So, the DRA is broken up into different levels. And it's a criterion-referenced assessment. And so, it is, there are grade level affiliations with the DRA levels, but it is not a standardized assessment. It's a criterion-referenced assessment. So, you know, you take that with a little bit, a grain of salt, as they say. And so, this is a DRA level eight. And you can see, it tells you right there what this book consists of. It's three to eight lines of text per page, some picture support, a variety of topics and texts are included. And there's more pages or lines of text may contain a few unfamiliar words that the student may be reading. And so, this is actually from today. So, I, today, we're in the middle of our winter benchmarking period, which we'll talk about in a little bit. I actually was over at Lincoln Hancock, sitting in on an ILT meeting. So, this is an example of the teachers actually participating in an ILT meeting this morning. In this picture is actually the data coach from the MAP, from NWEA, is coaching the, the teachers through some of the, the data, how to more effectively use the data from the MAP. And then this is just an example because they're kind of all looking, you're not sure what they're looking at in the first one. But this is what they're looking at, the, the screen, although not clear in this picture, has the data up and posted with all of the children's data available for all of the team to, to view.
Well, no MCAS in the fall, thank goodness. Much of the first months of middle school are devoted to, to beginning of the year assessments so that teachers can gauge the readiness or the preparedness of students that grade level. Excuse me. Don't look. We don't care. Thank you. As teachers design their scope and sequence for the fall, they refer to the learning outcomes in the curriculum frameworks and they plan for assessments. Writing across the content areas is a critical focus area for the middle school. So, writing prompts offer teachers and students a real-time assessment of writing skills in the fall. This is our first year in middle school of implementing the MAP Benchmark in grades six and seven. This tool measures growth, informs instruction, and provides instructional strategies for educators working with students in need of support or who are ready for enrichment. Teachers also create and adapt many of their own formative and summative assessments throughout the year. We have so much more for you. Okay, stay tuned. Sure, yes, yes. If you turn to the next page, you won't be able to see all the different examples, but I can briefly describe them. A few of the examples of assessments used to measure progress at the middle school level in the fall are science-related close reading performance tasks, a writing argument prompt from the Collections ELA Resource, which you helped us purchase last year, a test question from Big Ideas Math with an online graphing calculator tool for students to solve in graph quadratic functions. What I like about this is the Big Ideas Resource has been around now for four years at the middle school level. And it has that online testing component that can be either used for quizzes or tests. So, students are getting a chance to use the technology embedded tools. There's also an example of a math reading question with an embedded drag-and-drop way to answer the question and a sample iReady math question. The iReady diagnostic is used with identified students, so a smaller population at the middle school. It starts with a test very similar to, to math that determines students' academic skills in math. And the test is adaptive, so it will adjust as the child is performing on each question. The results of the test help teachers identify exactly where the students need to develop. Teachers can use this information to design individualized instruction that meets the needs of students struggling in math. iReady is currently being used with math-focused special education teachers.
Okay. Good evening. I'm going to tell you a little bit about the high school fall assessment window. And at the high school level, teachers do focus on formative assessments in the fall. And these include teacher-created quizzes, projects, and performance-based tasks that often take place at the end of a specific content unit or at the end of a term. As was described with middle school, the assessments align directly to our curriculum frameworks for high school content areas and give educators the opportunity to adjust practice based on their students' performance of the assessments. High school also administers the MCAS retest for English Language Arts and Math in November. The assessment is for 10th graders who are new to Massachusetts public schools and as well as 11th and 12th graders who have not yet achieved a passing score in order to graduate. So, they are able to take this retest. The assessment is the same in rigor and level of difficulty as the 10th grade MCAS exam. Teachers do know ahead of time which students need to take the retest and they integrate test preparation into their daily instruction with a focus on specific areas of need or standards that might need a little more attention to assist in preparing these students for the retest. The next slide, I'll be, we'll be showing some examples. So, as we mentioned, student, teachers often create their own formative classroom assessments. And one way to do this is to use ExamView software, which is a software that allows teachers to pull test items from a question bank that is directly aligned to the textbook that they are using for instruction. Here's an example of a math assessment created in ExamView. Almost all of the textbooks that we use in the high school are aligned to ExamView and use ExamView as an assessment tool for test and quiz creation. So, it's a very nice feature. For subjects like ELA and ESL, writing prompts are also very common assessments that are given throughout the fall to gauge a student, students' growth and achievement in academic writing. Here's a sample of a writing prompt from a ninth-grade essay response to be constructed as the final project after reading The Odyssey. And now, another one is a different writing prompt for an 11th-grade college and career prep or honors English class that relates to the novel Ethan Frome.
So, although we may give many of the same assessments during the winter benchmark as we do in the fall, there are some important differences to note. The first is progress monitoring. Progress monitoring occurs primarily using the DIBELS progress monitoring tool once a month for students who've been identified in need of support during the fall benchmarking period. This information is reviewed throughout the fall and winter months and also at our winter, winter ILT meetings. It is another valuable data point that helps us determine whether or not our interventions and supports are working. During this time, we are looking to see that the amount of words per minute that a child is able to read has increased from fall to spring or, fall to winter. In addition, that their accuracy has also improved as they decode the passages from the assessment that you saw earlier. One additional indicator that is reviewed is a student's ability to decode nonsense words correctly. This is one of my absolute favorite tools to use. We value the use of nonsense words because they are unfamiliar to the student and therefore cannot be memorized. This allows us to get a more accurate assessment of where the students are in terms of their phonological processing. The focus on the MAP and the MPG assessment continues. But at this point in the school year, we are taking a very close look at individual student growth targets. We now have two data points that allow us to assess, assess whether or not that the student is making adequate gains during the course of the year. We also set new growth goals for the spring by using the Learning Continuum Report to identify exactly where a student is performing in terms of the standards, their zone of proximal development, or what we refer to as what they are ready to learn today.
At the high school level, students are taking mid-year exams, which are culminating exams or presentations for all high school courses for the first half of the year. Students take these exams at the end of term two. There are four terms at high school. Or at the mid-year point. And each exam can last up to an hour and a half. Students are assessed on content and skill mastery in each of the content areas for, again, the first half of the school year. And mid-year exams allow educators to evaluate where they are along the, where their students are along the continuum and help them to plan instructional pacing for the remainder of the year. WEDA's Access for ELL is our annual standardized assessment that is specifically for English learners. It measures their English language proficiency for four domains, that's listening, speaking, reading, and writing. Students are tested during a five-week window occurring in January, February. The testing days are usually two testing days. Scores are released in late May and these help to determine the appropriate instructional level of English language development needed for each English learner and whether any, whether English learners might potentially be ready for exiting the English learning program.
On the next slide, we have moved through the course of the year. And during the spring window, it is time for our students in grades three to five to participate in the MCAS assessment in the areas of English Language Arts and Mathematics and Science and Technology and Engineering for grade five. We also begin to get ready for our new students that will be joining us in the fall. Our kindergarten and pre-kindergarten screenings take place using the EZK and the EZP. These assessments assess students to determine their readiness skills and their development in the areas of gross and fine motor, as well as pre-academic skills such as counting and color identification. Students participate in the MAP or MPG for a third time and teams review and assess individual student growth goals and performance on the standards as we prepare to support our students in the summer and the year ahead. In addition to our ILTs that happen three times per year once benchmarking data is complete, we also have mini ILTs that occur between fall and winter and winter and spring. During these meetings, progress monitoring data is reviewed and changes in interventions and support are made based on the data collected. These meetings help us ensure that we are continually monitoring students' progress and making sure that we are doing, that what we are doing in and outside the classroom is having the desired impact on our students' learning. So, some examples of some of the spring assessments that we use. So, this first one is actually an example from the MCAS 2.0, the mathematics assessment. The next example, so this is the example of the assessment that I talked with you about earlier. This is the nonsense word fluency assessment from the DIBELS. So, you'll see, as I pointed out earlier, the students are not familiar with these, these words at all, which allows us to assess exactly what sounds they know and, and understand and are able to apply in unfamiliar or novel words. The next, the next example, this one- The next example, this one I love, this is from the EZK. And the reason that we use this, it might seem kind of silly, but the reason that we use it right now is what we're looking for is we're looking to see that students in their fine motor development, do they understand that when you draw a person, it has a head and a body and legs and arms? You know, so it gives us a great, and that's where we've talked with you before about Handwriting Without Tears in both the preschool and the kindergarten level, and this is where Matt Man comes in, and we all love Matt Man. And he teaches students how to draw an appropriate person in their drawing. So you can see that these children are all coming at it from different perspectives and different points. Some of them, we have some work to do, but you know, it's a great indicator of where they are in terms of their development when they're coming to us in kindergarten. And there's one more example or two more examples? Two more examples. This next example, so this is, we actually use this today. This is the quadrant report from the math assessment. So in this example, we absolutely love this report. We use it at our ILT meetings. And so what it talks about, it looks at the students you can look at, you can filter, you'll see on the side all the different filters that you can use. You can filter it for math or reading, male, female, and it looks at the top corner, low achievement, high growth, high achievement, high growth, high achievement, low growth in the bottom in the yellow there, and low achievement, low growth. So you know, the areas that you know, we're really focusing in on, we're focusing in on, we want to make sure, even if you have high achievement, you're meeting your growth goals, so we're focusing, you know, in on that yellow, and then on the red of the low achievement, low growth. You know, the one in the orange, you know, we definitely are concerned for those students because they're low achievement, but they're meeting their growth, so they're making incremental progress, which is, you know, what we want to see. We want to see them continuing to grow. So just an example of a tool that we use. And then there's one more, again, that we use today. So this is the actual growth chart for an individual student, and this, you know, is actually a little shot from the ILT this morning. So you know, you can see what they were talking about is that little dip that occurred, that dark line is the student's performance. And so discussing, you know, even though that student is above, in the green, above grade level, why did that little dip occur? And you know, trying to figure out and look at the different data points that they have to figure out how they can support that student so they don't dip again.
Okay, so for the middle school, the common assessments that get the most attention are the spring math benchmark for end-of-year growth indicators, exactly what Erin was just showing you except for our middle school students, and of course, the MCAS test. That takes up a big part of thinking for spring. This year, we're also going to pilot a new STEM test for our oldest middle school students to help in their transition to the high school. The Science Advanced Pathways Team is working this week to finalize the question types for the pilot STEM assessment. Our STEM team administrator has collaborated with each grade eight science teacher to schedule the assessment, which will occur in February. The results will be one metric, the vertical eight, nine math and science team members, those are teachers, will consider when placing students for ninth grade. Term grades, MCAS history, recent exam grades, and teacher recommendations will also play a role in course recommendations. Students in the sixth and seventh grade will also be taking their spring math benchmark. End-of-year progress will be reviewed and celebrated with students and become a part of their overall assessment history. End-of-year results may be considered in planning IEP goals, recommendations for summer practice, or placement in next year's courses. Middle school students will take their spring 2018 MCAS tests in ELA and math during the months of April and May, and students in grades five and eight will also be taking their science, technology, and engineering MCAs. Starting this month, starting in January, teachers, guidance counselors, principals, specialists, special educators, all turn their attention to student assessment updates and trainings offered by the Department of Education. However, here in Quincy, the best preparation and support we have learned comes from our own weekly and monthly grade level and vertical team meetings with colleagues and team administrators.
So as you can imagine, MCAS assessments are all the focus at the high school in the spring administration window. This starts with our spring retests that happened in February and March. Again, these are for students who are in grades 10 through 12, who have not yet earned that competency determination in ELA, math, or science, technology, and engineering. In March, April, and June, the 10th grade MCAS assessment will be given to 10th graders for the first time. ELA happens in March, math is in April, and also a little bit into May, and science occurs in June. Quincy's current 10th graders are the last group of students to be taking the legacy MCAS exam. Next year, 10th graders, in 2019, our 10th graders will be introduced to the next generation MCAs. In addition, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education will be holding mandatory field tests for the next generation MCAS exam, and Quincy will be participating in the ELA portion. They've been chosen to do the ELA field tests. There will also be mandatory question tryouts for next generation science, technology, and engineering as well towards the end of the school year. I wish we had more examples to show you or things we could explain about those field tests, but that will be coming soon. Advanced placement testing and exams are also given at the end of the year in May for all 11th and 12th grade students who are taking AP courses. We currently have 19 AP course offerings at both high schools, and the College Board is basically driving it up. They set the dates and the times for these exams, and we comply with their regulations. During the last week of school in our high schools, the students take their final exams, which are those culminating exams that focus on content and skills taught in the second half of the school year. Final exams are very useful to teachers to see whether or not their students were really able to master the standards and skills that were expected of their grade level in each content area. So now, the next slide, where there are some examples of the spring assessments that I just mentioned. The first is an example of a reading comprehension question from the 10th grade MCAS exam. In this example, students are expected to read a poem. I did not give you the whole poem, it was a little long. And they're supposed to answer questions related to that poem. The first two questions on the example are multiple choice, while the third is an open-response question where students must write several sentences and include evidence from the poem in their answer. The second example is from a 10th grade biology MCAS exam. It is also a short-answer type question with two parts, so students must examine the picture, and they have to respond accordingly based on their knowledge of plant and animal restoration. The third example comes from an advanced placement psychology exam. In this example question, students must choose the correct graph that represents a scattergram based on the data presented above in the chart. So those are just a few examples of the assessments that we see at the high school level. So as you can see, there are really many people who participate in organizing, implementing, and making sure our assessments are done successfully in the assessment calendar each year. School administrators, the principal's leadership team, curriculum and assessment management team, other content grade level academic program area teams, student support services, teachers, specialists, paraprofessionals, there are really many people who participate in organizing, implementing, and making sure our assessments are done successfully in the assessment calendar each year. School administrators, the principal's leadership team, curriculum and assessment management team, other content grade level academic program area teams, student support services, teachers, specialists, paraprofessionals, and the technology planning and training team are all responsible for making sure that our assessments run smoothly and student achievement and success is supported every step of the way.
Tonight, the assessment calendar has been presented as its own initiative. However, we could leave you with one important takeaway, and that would be that assessment doesn't happen in isolation. Curriculum, instruction, and assessment go hand in hand. Here in the Quincy Public Schools, there's a continuous cycle of reflecting, planning, analysis of data, alignment to standards, creating measurable action steps to be included in the district and school improvement plans, lesson planning with colleagues, daily instruction, collection of student work, and vertical department and grade level team meetings to regap and revise the tools of teaching and assessment. Each term or semester requires summative and benchmark assessments to monitor and document student progress. Student supports are put into place or revised and adjusted. Professional development feeds directly into instructional practice. Extended day offerings allow students to build new skills or enhance their talents. Every part of this cycle contributes to a student's well-being as a learner, a test-taker, a performer, and a problem solver. We hope the presentation was informative. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Any questions or comments? Sigur.
Thank you. As a parent of a high school and a middle school, two boys, super excited to hear that the standard tests are available, means of measurement. And you know, and there's a variety. So it was, first of all, it was eye-opening for me that there were so many different tools happening at so many different levels for all of our children. So I think that's awesome. Completely love that. Other than the MCAs, as a parent, I don't recall getting anything else in writing about an assessment of my child. Should I be, do we get any, are parents supposed to get written information about any of these assessments at any of those?
I can speak to the high school level. The information, the assessments that occur with mid-year and final exams can certainly be discussed at any time with a parent-teacher conference. They're really local assessments, so of course, usually mid-year and final exams are corrected and then either gone over, you know, they go over them with students, but release of information to parents would be as requested. They come out in the grades and in grade books, so definitely teachers have information about the assessments that they give, and I'm sure they're happy to share the things that they do with those benchmark assessments and the end-of-term and the unit assessments. We could talk about middle and high school.
Well, so I can talk about the math. So the math is new. You know, we've had it in elementary school for, this is our third year. So when we initially started it, you know, especially the first year, we didn't release the scores unless a parent requested it because the teachers were just learning it themselves and were not really able to necessarily answer the questions, you know, that the parents may have. So if parents asked for the scores, we absolutely, you know, released them, and we actually, the very first year we implemented it, we did it as a pilot. So parents did, some parents did actually opt out if, you know, they wanted to. And so, but now, our teachers, you know, in the elementary school level are pretty comfortable, you know, with the math assessment, so we are printing and giving out what's called the student profile report, but it's, you know, new in terms of elementary school and middle school. It is their first year, so I'll let Maddie talk about that, but the other assessments like the DIBELS and the DRA, those you don't get a printout. It's just the sheet that I, literally the sheets that I just showed you in the presentation. So teachers do have them at report card conferences and do, and will share them, you know, with parents at report card conferences in terms of the elementary school. But I would say absolutely right now, yes, we are starting to hand out the math profile reports to parents.
And I'll just reiterate that for the middle school, we are still in our training and learning phase ourself, so we said to the teachers, we don't expect you, as you're learning, to feel comfortable necessarily with a parent report. However, a principal or guidance counselor or Erin or myself would be happy to go over a parent report. And once we get comfortable with one year under our belt, I think then we'll be able to communicate more about those results and how we're using them.
So just as a follow-up, so you know, the different principals my boys have had communicate differently. There are different ways, I mean, you see, some have newsletters, others are religious about giving us voicemails or sending emails or whatever the case may be, so everybody's a little bit different. But I don't recall getting kind of a contextual email at the beginning of the year, say, to school, you're saying, "There are X number of assessments that happen at these grade levels for your children." These are the names of them, these are the purposes of them. You can ask your teacher for their take on the assessment. Which teacher do I ask? All the teachers? Certain teachers? So it would be, as a parent, it'd be great to contextually understand at each grade level what the assessments are that happen during the year, maybe, I don't know if there's a uniform standard, and then my question is, are the principals provided a common explanation of each assessment at each level so that they can distribute it both directly to the parents and present it at PTOs? And they're going to be terrific to do both if it doesn't, maybe it happens, I don't, but I don't have a recollection of getting anything that put it in contextually for me so that I knew what to ask, and I'm not to all the parent conferences, and I love them, they're exciting, it's great, but those are things that I want to flag, and if I didn't have an email that explained it to me upfront or at a PTO meeting, I wouldn't know to ask.
Great suggestion, and I will tell you that you'd be very proud of your elementary, middle school, and high school principals, how informed they are about every assessment from maybe not so much the teacher-created quiz, but every type of end-of-unit or chapter test that goes along with a resource to all, all the way up to the state testing. So that would be a great recommendation we could make to them about maybe, and we could even support that, some PTO presentations about an assessment timeline.
Yeah, and just a uniform description that goes out at the beginning of the day to parents would be super helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I have a few. If you could look at the calendar with me, on the February 5th, 6th, Biology MCAS test. It says it's the grades nine and 10, but on the right it says it's supposed to be on or to CD. So I'm not really sure, is this just a retest?
It is a retest. Normally, it's not given to ninth graders, they haven't completed a full year of biology. So it's, the biology test itself is a ninth-year temporary test, so probably, putting together the subject calendar.
Okay, but the biology test itself could be given in the spring as well during the S E M test then?
Yes, in June.
In June, okay, thank you. My other question is, and I know I've asked this question before, but I don't see the SATs on here, and I understand, my understanding is that now the SATs can actually be done during the school day. It's an option for school districts?
I'm not familiar with that, but I can point it out. I don't know if that's...
I know, I don't believe that we're doing it, that we're still doing it on the Saturdays, but I don't know what those dates are and what kind of preparation we're giving our students. So I would just like that to be included in the calendar. If you can make that correction for me. Thanks. Anybody else, questions or comments? Thank you very much, everyone. We appreciate it. Next, we have the Elementary School Technology Initiative by Mr. Sigur.
Thank you, Vice Chair of LEVO, and good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I'm pleased to share and highlight technology appropriation that was provided by our mayor, Mayor Koch. The purpose and overview of the technology appropriation was to review student access to technology at each elementary site and assess preparations for the expansion of the MCAS 2.0, computer-based testing for grades four and five this spring. Mayor Koch has provided additional funding for technology investment so that Quincy Public Schools will significantly increase the availability of student devices and be fully prepared for computer-based testing for both grades four and five when it begins in April. Thank you, Mayor Koch, for this timely technology funds, your leadership, and your consistent support in so many aspects of our educational programs within Quincy Public Schools. We certainly appreciate it. We developed various key questions and considerations. Our first key question, "How will the technology funding assist in improving the ratio of students to computers at each elementary site?" And I guide you to the next slide, next page, page four. This matrix provides detailed data on the availability of student devices at each elementary school site. You'll notice when column Z, October 1st, is a moment for each school, as well as the basis for calculating the student-to-computer ratios. Column C, the number of computers in each school as of December 1st, which in... Column C, the number of computers in each school as of December 1st, which includes computer labs and mobile devices only. It wouldn't include the teacher, classroom computer, teacher, desk computer, or pods of classroom student computers. Once again, just computer labs and mobile devices. You'll also notice various PTOs have purchased mobile devices as well, so we thank them for their support. You'll notice in column C, the various schools. Column D is the current ratio of students to computers at each school as of December, December 1st, 2017. Column E is the proposed additional devices and carts that were purchased for each site for Mayor Koch's technology appropriation, which includes a total of 310 Chromebooks and 10 carts. And just to give you a quick breakdown, you'll notice Atherton Howe, 24 Chromebooks, one cart. Beachwood Knoll, 17 Chromebooks, one cart. Bernazani, 13 Chromebooks. Lincoln Hancock, 50 Chromebooks, two carts. Sterling Middle School, grade five, 18 Chromebooks. Clifford Marshall, 68 Chromebooks, two carts. Plin Webster, grade five, 11 Chromebooks. Marymount, 17 Chromebooks, one cart. Woncler, 22 Chromebooks, one cart. Parker, 22 Chromebooks, one cart. Snug Harbor, 20 Chromebooks, one cart. Swanum, 18 Chromebooks. Walston, 12 Chromebooks. Once again, 310 Chromebooks, 10 darts. Column F, totals of existing devices as well as the new purchase devices for each school. Column G, you'll notice the adjusted ratio of students to computers at each school based on the, again, the existing computers and the new devices. Certainly a positive impact with this new funding, thanks again to Mayor Koch. And you'll notice column H is additional computers recently purchased or pending purchases by the school PTOs. Through our analysis and working with our principals, they indicated, certainly at Bernazani and Swanum, that PTOs may purchase additional Chromebooks. And if they do so, you'll notice that the ratio will go down. For example, if Bernazani is now 5 to 1, if they purchase additional 25, it will be reduced to 4 to 1, same as Swanum. Next slide. Considerations include increasing the availability of computers and time for students and staff to use these devices in their classrooms and computer labs. Establishing foundational information that can be used for budgeting, analysis, equity issues, and serves as a guide for both the system and PTOs in assessing technology purchases. This informational base can be and will be updated annually. The second key question, how will the additional technology funding assist in preparations for the expansion of computer-based testing to grade five? If I can guide you to page seven, next slide. Columns B and E is the current moment for grades four and five at all schools. Column C and F, the total number of computers available to students as of January, today, which includes funding sources from both QPS budget, Mayor Koch's technology funding, as well as the PTO support. Columns D and G is the ratio of testing students to computers during grade-level testing window. It's important to note for all schools that at least one computer available for each student during the testing window. So that's something to know as well. Considerations include the optimal student-to-computer ratio for MCAS testing grades, increased student access to computer labs and devices for MCAS 2.0 preparation and practice sessions, eliminating the need for transporting Chromebooks and Chromebook carts between schools during the testing window, as well as additional devices will allow principals to effectively schedule MCAS 2.0, computer-based testing, and reduce the number of days dedicated to testing in the larger elementary schools. For example, last spring, Clifford Marshall, they had 140, 120 students, and they only had six devices, so they had to double the number of days tested. This year, that's been eliminated, thanks to, again, Mayor Koch and the support, we now have 120 devices for 120 students. So again, special thanks to Mayor Koch for your support, as well as Courtney and Scott for the Citywide PTO for being so instrumental in this endeavor. Just a wonderful collaboration. Superintendent and I met with both Courtney and Scott a few times, early mornings, to share this program, this initiative, so we thank them for their support. Superintendent, thank you for your leadership as well.
Any questions or comments, Keith? Mr. Gattuso?
Just a quick question. So I wasn't around last year, but I knew that there were issues, and it was the issue of the shortages and sharing and expanding testing days, and this remedies that, was that...
In most cases, yes.
So is there still a school or two that's a gap or...
At the elementary level, absolutely not, with the support of this new devices, 310 devices, to be exact.
The other levels?
We're expecting no problems, but again, we'll find out in spring.
And the other levels?
Middle is, certainly at the high school, it's the pilot, we're playing technology labs at the high school level, and middle school, I believe we should be okay. Certainly at the, the Romans that are, have less students, for example, Broad Meadows, Point, and Sterling. A little bit higher at Atlantic, Snug, oh, excuse me, Atlantic and Central, but I think it looks more or less 2 to 1 at that, those two sites, Atlantic and Central, but we should be okay.
Thank you, Keith, appreciate it.
Mayor Koch?
Thank you, Mr. Lebo. I just want to acknowledge some of this background for me, because as mayor, as involving the schools, I'm not under the weeds on a lot of these items. And I appreciate the call. Courtney reached out and expressed concern about the ratio of the schools, and I'm grateful for all the work the PTOs do for our schools, but I don't think they should be out-raising money for technology in our classrooms. So, you know, this was a, we were able to find some dollars toward it, so I'm glad it's helping this year, and we'll continue to look at it to get to even better ratio going forward. So I just want to thank Keith and Superintendent for jumping on it right away. We got the border to hang up the state contract list, and the turnaround is great, so again, thank you Courtney for those folks that we've been on.
I'd like to add some, first, I have a question for you, Keith, on this slide that says appearing for MCAS 2.0, were you listing one-on-one to the fourth grade and one-on-one to the fifth grade?
Chuck?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, Chuck? So I think that we don't have one-on-one to the fourth grade and one-on-one to the fifth grade at the same time.
No, we don't.
So this confused me because it looked like we had twice the number of computers that we have. Are we assuming that the fourth grade and fifth grade are going to test on different days?
That's correct.
So that we will have one-on-one to the fourth grade? Thank you very much, that was my question. Thank you very much for this, and thank you for the appropriation, Mayor. I agree that the PTO should help in funding our technology. One of the things we had asked you, Phil, Keith, earlier, and I don't know how you will even do this, but we're still hoping that you'll get us a benchmark for what you think we need in our schools. Considering that it's not just MCAS, it's incredibly for MCAS, but it's the access test, it's the math test, it's a lot of the curricular materials we have now, what do we think the ratio should be and should be based on, whether we have students with disabilities, students with ELL, or, I think that's a pretty comprehensive thing to look at. In your free time, if you could give that thought, appreciate it. Anybody else, questions or concerns? Thank you, Keith. The next item on the agenda is the MSBA Statement of Interest. And this is going to require a roll call vote for each item on the Statement of Interest, the first one being the Swanum Elementary School. Do I have a motion to...
Motion to approve, this is something that I think this is the third year.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Superintendent, you call the roll.
Mr. Andronico?
Yes.
Mr. Regoli is absent. Mr. DiMechis?
Yes.
Mr. Gattuso?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
And Mayor Koch?
Yes.
Number two, the Accelerator Repair Program for the back elementary schools, were there?
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor? Oh, we have to have a little, I'm sorry. Superintendent, I'm sorry.
Mr. Andronico?
Yes.
And Mr. Regoli is absent. Mr. DiMechis?
Yes.
Mr. Gattuso?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
And Mayor Koch?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is the Accelerator Repair Program, point of assistance to the school windows and doors.
Motion to approve, and on the motion, if I might. I know these, these items, we've looked at before, we've made great progress in all of our buildings over the last several years, but I do, I do want to say thank you to the School Building Authority, Treasurer Deb Goldberg, Jack McCarthy, Director works with us since, since Quincy High School. I think the city's received about $135 million in reimbursement on the school building program, so that's pretty significant, so, and it wouldn't have happened without the creation of a legislative site, and Mariano's, I just wanted to say thank you, very, very welcome.
I'd like to add to that, Ted Kato, who started the initiative for the state, and we have been very lucky recently, so thank you for the work of the city, of the school system on that. So, motion? You're welcome.
Mr. Andronico?
Yes.
Mr. Regoli is absent. Mr. DiMechis?
Yes.
Mr. Gattuso?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
And Mayor Koch?
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
I am, dear, the new business is gifts. I'd like to make a motion to accept the gift of $7,500 from the election.
I'll make the motion to accept the gift.
On the motion, any discussion on the motion to accept the gift? All those in favor?
Aye.
Like to entertain a motion to accept the second gift.
Motion to accept the gift from the class of 1954 to Quincy High School.
Second. Second, by Mr. Andronico. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any say?
I might, I'm, I'm Jerry Sormson, and I appropriate a couple of thanks to the...
Item E, overnight travel in state, February, Quincy High School to Boston University, model U-MAN.
Motion to approve.
Second. Second, by Mr. Andronico, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The March 9th, 11th, Quincy High School Student Council to the Mass Association of Student Council Conference in Buenos Aires. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Out of state travel overnight, April 6th, Quincy High School Junior ROTC to Yorktown, Virginia. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve. March 6th, Quincy High School, Rockford, Quincy High School, Roblox, and First Roblox Competition against the University. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the other, country travel, April 20th, 21st, Quincy High School to Calas, and Board of Representatives.
Motion to approve.
Which is approved by Mrs. DiMechis, seconded, second by Mr. Andronico. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any say that we pass all those for now, thanks. Additional business? We see none. Under communications, I would like to see if we could look at the upcoming school committee meetings. They're in your calendar, we already put those into, on the table, so that we know they're, oh, no, I'm sorry, this is February 7th and March 7th and the 21st at the Covington Building here. I'd like to add one thing, that on February 7th, Julie Krieg, the new Quincy High School Science Chairperson, had annual science fair at 5:30 the same day, so if you're coming to the school committee meeting, you have an opportunity to sneak by the science fair and take a look, it would be appreciated by the, both of our high schools do incredible science fairs, and to see them is something, so it would be great if you guys could take a visit to those. And also upcoming school, subcommittee meetings, also at Covington Building, Budget and Finance will be on January 31st, Teaching and Learning on the 31st also, February 28th and March 28th at 6:00 PM. Athletics and Wellness will be March 14th at 6:00 PM. Facility Security and Transportation will be March 14th at 6:00 PM. And reports of subcommittee? Mrs. Scooplin, policy?
Thank you. We have a meeting of the Policy Subcommittee on Wednesday, March 17th. Present was myself, Mr. Andronico, Mr. DiMechis, and Mrs. Lebo. There was a draft of the school committee meeting dates for 2018, 2019 school year, as well as a draft of the school year calendar for the 2018, 2019 school year. Both were open for discussion and voted to move back into a full committee for a vote. And both calendars appear on, appear on January 24th, committee meeting and agenda for discussion, and are eligible for a vote on January 7th. Minutes are in full online, anybody would like to review them.
Does anybody have any corrections to these minutes? Seeing none, the minutes pass, I'd now like to ask Mr. Andronico to report on January 17th, Special Education Subcommittee.
Thank you. A meeting of the Special Education Subcommittee was held on Wednesday, January 17th. Present were myself, Mr. DiMechis, Mr. Seably, and Mr. Lebo. Director of Special Education, Erin Perkins, was so kind to join us and introduce the Director of Special Education staff, discuss their roles and responsibilities. They presented two different presentations. The first was on special education pathways in Quincy Public Schools, and the second being special education points and responsibilities. And that nearly wrapped up our session for the Subcommittee meeting. It was very informative, thank you again for coming, and the resources are online at QuincyPublicSchools.com.
Thank you, Mr. Andronico. Does anybody have any corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, those minutes pass. Next item on the agenda is Executive Session, we have none, and so I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.